It was very high. Yeah. All the renovations have been drastic and pretty much, despite the
It's my goal, hashtag.
That's always your goal.
No, it's maybe that worst. Most beautiful. You can minimize that, but don't close it. We go to this, you know, the part of, yeah.
Did you get something to me on that? Yeah.
I have had time to do that.
Yeah. Okay.
I've been trying to get ready for a meeting and.
Now.
Why don't I say the bottom sale?
Now.
We're not, we're.
Okay.
Nothing, you can't say anything till the member meeting anyway.
We don't get any sand.
Before, did you say?
Not yet.
No, not yet.
Probably not.
Yeah, I was gonna reply, Karen.
And then you will take the.
Okay, even.
I'll be, well, we'll be doing that.
I'll be.
Okay. Okay, I will. Thank you for ending this way. Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, is that what it's about?
This idea wasn't moved.
No, it wasn't.
But when did they?
I think it was you, sir. I don't think it was me.
It is good to get out and see other libraries around. Is that Claire?
Yes.
Yes, but you've got a fantastic facility here. And the three of us so far are glad to be here. Hopefully a fourth will join, so we'll, we'll be able to start a meeting. Look at the minute, we'll have maybe next of that one. On the appointment to the Williams Library.
Yeah, right.
This one. Who moved that? Oh, I was not here.
Eric did. Eric Williams did.
Eric Williams made your motion.
Yeah. He made Eric on there. He said we should gratefully accept. Sabrina was the, Sabrina as Vice President chaired the meeting.
Arizona's way, he was about two or three minutes out. And I left a message.
I'm sure we're gonna. Yeah.
You can make, you can make Eric. I have just read.
I just know.
Well, she's correct.
Feel like.
That bleached.
She did, she was all, don't even look at me.
Don't even think about it.
Some of the president was like, we were.
Yeah, that's the president of Harvard.
Oh, no.
Maybe different in other places.
Let me go make some changes in this meeting.
It is.
I felt that he already.
He does some. You know, there you go. It's a bowl. See. He almost didn't know what to say.
It is.
Or not, because I'm only going to. I didn't get a full name.
The great words were, there's an orange. So neither of them are not made on.
Was it?
Neither of them are not. They're actually.
Okay. Right back.
Like, are these things you're not going over probably out of the scope of that? Anything else? Oh, that's true. I personally, it's a. Yeah, I think that's an idea. If they're not, they shouldn't. Isn't that pretty? That's a day that I'll just. Then. Chapter. Oh, we didn't do it. Well, it's. It's.
So.
That's a change. It was actually, anyway. You were here and you wanted to go. You know, it's.
Oh.
The practice of when, you know, whole weeks.
Very short. The whole pieces.
I don't play.
Shrek. On.
That people.
Yes. Right. Yeah.
They merge with some. Hey, sorry. She's got a class.
You started.
Yeah.
Maybe I invite you to.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have a forum. The first day.
Andy gets to be a treasure. Oh, sweet.
And Lori can need about eighty six minutes. Well, now, Paul, the, um, I was looking from. Yeah, October ninth, two thousand twenty five, for the special needs we need. I have no grand ever trouble with library. Our first order of business is an introduction in form for visitors. I don't know if you have outside public visitors and anyone signed up for the school at the board. Not at this time, yes. It's nice to be here, McCullough, Claire. Thanks for hosting us.
It's great.
So correspondence and going around, um, some, um, great information from Human Relations Commission and Freedom Free in there. So excellent correspondence as always. Which brings us to our consent agenda. The minutes of the September meeting, personnel matters, September PR reports, administrative report, and the monthly public service specifics. We're entertaining motion on the consent agenda.
I'm ready to.
Sorry, a motion in the second. Are there any comments or questions about those matters? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion carries. We're now prepared for item number five, governance. Item five A, the adoption of twenty twenty six Library Operating Fund, Library Improvement Reserve Fund, Bonds and Interest Redemption Fund, the Rain Day Fund, and Special Library Willard Fund. But this, Lori?
First, I want to welcome Executive Director of Willard, George Carter, and their treasurer, Steve, um.
Worthing.
Worthington, I started to say Southington, I knew that wasn't right. Wel- welcome. Uh, and they, they are here because, of course, Willard's part of our budget process. So included in the packet is again a copy of the Budget Form Three, which is the notice to taxpayers, and Budget Forms Four B, the Budget Estimate Finance State and Proposed Tax Rate, for each fund is shared with you during the public hearing. There were no taxpayer objection petitions received within seven days of the public hearing. Therefore, with the posting of the Notice of Taxpayers for the Board Adoption Meeting in accordance with Indiana Code Six dash one point one dash seventeen dash three, you'll also find Form Four in your packet, an ordinance setting the twenty twenty six appropriation sums for the expenditures and for the purposes of raising revenue, the property tax levy, and rates for your uniform. As mentioned at last month's public hearing, the levy amounts and rates follow prescribed guidance of the DLGF. And however, they are subject to change when the state budget agency and DLGF certify them in the seventeen eighty two notice and budget order that comes later this year. So with that, you just need a motion to approve the five budgets and tax levies.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye aye.
Same sign opposed.
I have the official ordinance to be passed around. If you would sign next to your name and check the I box and our secretary signs for us, please.
We're ready for item number five B, the Resolution to Distribute Insolvent Taxes.
So as we're preparing for our budgets, and we met with the DLGF for our annual workshop back in August, it was brought to our attention that the House Enrollment Act, or Enrolled Act thirteen ninety two, has changed the way that the county, the state distributes to the county, and then the way the county distributes to the local agencies or local government units, which is EVPL. So we are proposing the volume resolution, um, in which we receive semi-annual distributions of miscellaneous taxes, including financial institute taxes, and also the commercial vehicle excise taxes. And because House Enroll Acts thirteen ninety two adopted, um, by the Indiana legislation changed the way those are distributed, um, it amends the financial institute tag and the commercial vehicle excise tax, um, being distributed from the county auditor to local units, allowing for taxing you to deposit these tax distributions to any fund maintained by the taxing unit, and that these distributions may be used for any purpose allowed by law. Um, the reason we're having to do this is because right now they all come to our operating fund, these two types of taxes, and in the past, we've always had them distributed equally out to our debt service, our BRF account, and Willard's Special Library account as well. So in order for us to set that up with the DLGF and the state and the county, we have to do this resolution stating that you authorize tax distributions at EVPL to be proportionately distributed to those funds for which property taxes are leveled, which is debt service and Willard.
Lori, I don't think they were equally paid out. We were paid out in proportion.
Proportionately, yes.
Fair motion?
I'm ready.
Motion in the second, uh, all those in favor, or any questions or concern?
So the intent is not to change where the funds end up, is to change from in hands.
Correct.
Any others? All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Any sign opposed? Motion carries.
Here's the official resolution, you can sign it, and secretary device, please.
Next item is five C, employee benefits from recent check.
Yeah, hello, everyone. Um, so there will be, um, no increases to the premiums this year for the benefits. Um, everything stays the same. We're not bringing anything new or different, um, to the board this year. Um, once again, um, we, um, have increased our amount, though, that we pay out the initial fund that we carry for insurance premiums on our medical plan. Um, that has been seventy five thousand, um, just kind of kind of keep the cost down a little bit. Um, that has increased to eighty thousand. So every time there's a claim on whoever would have a medical claim, once it reaches the eighty thousand, um, then our captive and our stock loss insurance picks up that amount. So we have a very healthy fund, um, right now, we're right about a million, a little over a million dollars. So that's what that money's pulled from is that account. So once again, if we pay our premiums out, that money goes into that account to pay the premium or to pay the, um, invoices and stuff that come in. Um, so we're still continuing with the five hundred, one thousand deductible, so five hundred individual, a thousand for anything above, and then, um, the fifteen hundred or three thousand out of pocket. So once again, we are staying very healthy, um, with our, uh, plan. So we're able to really help keep everything great for our employees. Um, pharmacy, pharmacy benefit managers staying the same, and then we also still use our Sharks program to help keep our higher dollar prescription costs down. So that's a great thing that we've been able to put into place. Um, nothing's changing with our, um, home payments or anything else. Um, the corona captive is still strong with no changes for twenty twenty six. So that's our eleventh consecutive year that we've not had to put any extra money into it. So that's an awesome thing. Um, medical rates, of course, stay in the same at, at the ten and ninety percent share. Um, division, uh, we've been years now with no increases on that, so that's great. And then, uh, we did have that small increase with dental last year, but this year we're able to stay, um, locked in. They had a real good year. So we are, um, seeking the, uh, board's approval to continue all benefits as stated for the benefit year twenty twenty six.
The motion, so.
Second.
Motion in the second, any comments or questions?
So, so I just make sure I understand the seventy five thousand, eighty, eighty thousand is the point which our stop loss insurance coverage, which is paid for out of our captive, we're taking.
Correct, correct. They do a, a split share of about sixty forty, um, that kind of goes in together, and then anything that is over that, um, they pay out those, those claims. Yep.
Go with, what's the sixty forty again?
So the captive and the stop loss, they split the share that they pay out over the eighty thousand. So stop loss, you know, they, they have a big bite into the captive as well, um, so there's a cost split there.
So if we had a, a two hundred thousand dollar claim, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars would not be covered by our general insurance.
The captive.
But then the hundred and twenty thousand remaining would be split sixty forty between the insurance the captive is buying and the captive's fund available.
Correct. Good, good. That's what's so great about it is because there's such a big amount that the captive has always been able to contribute to that and not have to go to stop loss.
And, and we're not currently adding to our captive.
Correct, correct. So what happens is if we had a real bad year and the captive ended up, we, so we've been eleven years now. So we have a lot of money that, um, is in basically, we're, we basically own part of the captive. So anything above that is, um, a good thing because we don't have to pay into it as we could possibly.
So regular premiums don't go into?
Part of the premiums, yeah, that's what helps build it because when we, basically our TPA, when we pay our, our premiums, um, a portion of it goes to the captive, a portion goes to the stop loss premiums, you know, then we have all of our fees that go within, um, the TPA, which is basically what pays our, our invoices and stuff. So.
All claim.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the clinic use in there still?
Um, the clinic is not anyway, oh, we pay that separate.
Oh, that's separate.
Yeah.
Okay.
And of course, there was no increase with that. Uh, we did do those step increases with that over the years, um, and then this past year we didn't have to do an increase, but that was all kind of built in with the contract that we have. Um, you know, basically what they're doing right now is if there's any nurse practitioner or nurse increases with the salaries, that's the only thing that kind of hits, they're able to eat that a little bit out of our administrative fee that we pay them.
Other comments, questions for Lisa? Good. Oh, we have, we got a motion, so all those in favor?
Aye aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome, thanks.
You're now ready for item five D, uh, RFP on the air handler, supply fan replacement.
Good afternoon. So, uh, this past summer, we had a issue, we have an issue still, but we had a pretty severe issue with our air handler number two. And, uh, the age of the air handler, the existing supply fan and the, um, motor, uh, started failing. We just had the VFDs replaced as part of, as part of the, uh, renovation, central renovation, and we think the VFDs are probably a lot more sensitive, a lot more controlled. So they're noticing more problems with these, with the motors and stuff on these air handlers. So we've been having problems with air handler number two, the supply fan, and it quit working on a beautiful Sunday of a hundred and something degrees outside, and it didn't work at all that day. We got it working the next morning, and we've just been kind of, we have to constantly reset it and everything. Um, as part of the original bid, uh, for the, uh, renovation at Central, we did talk about renovating these, and we did not do it as part of the project. The cost was, was too high, so we did not choose to re, redo them at that time. We are now, we now have a failing motor, so we need to look at either replacing the motor or coming up with something. So we consulted with Hayford, who is our engineer record for the renovation, who also worked on the bids and specs, and, uh, Henry Steckler, the mechanical engineer, he came up and helped write a specification and drawings to be able to put out for a, uh, request for proposal, um, to get the air handler supply fan replaced with a six fan array. So over, over the length of time, if we were to lose one motor on there, we would still have five motors that could supply air and so on. So, um, in August of this year, we sent out six packets to local construction and mechanical contractors. Um, they all have the same project specifications and drawings, and it was also posted on the EVPL website. Um, from the distribution of the packets, we received inquiries from three contractors. We probably had more than that because a few of the contractors are already working on our job site, so they went and looked at the equipment. Uh, I didn't think to tell Lori that, and we probably should have said five contractors, because I know a couple onsite contractors looked at it also. Um, we got written proposals from two of the six packets that we sent out, and, um, the two packets that we received back was one from High Tech Sheet Metal for under fifty nine thousand, two hundred ninety dollars, and another from Mel K Mechanical Electrical Plumbing Contractors for a hundred and eighty five thousand, one hundred, one hundred and eighty one dollars. Uh, both of them had some subcontractors in there to help complete this work. So after reviewing the written proposals and taking into consideration the pricing variances, as well as consulting with Henry Steckler at Hayford, EVPL administration recommends acceptance of the High Tech Sheet Metal proposal for the replacement of the supply fan on air handler two.
Fair motion?
No move.
Second. I'm a motion in the second to accept this. Are there questions or comments?
When you say local, is that Southern Indiana, the tri-state?
Yes, sir. Contractors that we have used around in this area, we send, send to a lot of the ones that we've used before.
Okay, I just want to make contact, I would say they're in chain motion.
They're the ones currently doing the renovation at Central.
Any other comments, questions for Lamont? Hearing none, all those in favor, sitting five bucks, eight nine?
Aye aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lamont. We're now ready for the finance reports, report of appropriations. Lori?
Uh, in your packet is the December thirtieth month and appropriations report. It shows appropriation balance for the end of the third quarter of five million, five hundred seventy two thousand, eight hundred forty four dollars and nine cents, or approximately thirty two percent of the, uh, overall budget for the year. And I'll get into more detail during the third quarter update. And then the next item, I may just move on to investments. Okay, I'm rolling. Uh, the investments and balances, uh, are investments for September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, uh, total thirteen million, seven hundred thirty four thousand, four hundred dollars. It will point out on this, uh, particular report. We spoke to the finance committee back in late spring, early summer, that we had had an offer from our regular checking account bank, First Federal Savings Bank, to move public funds into a money market type savings account, uh, with an interest that is very competitive to Trust Indiana. Uh, upon receiving that proposal, we talked to the finance committee, and then we went back and actually got quotes from, or inquired with six other banks in Evansville, who had presence in Evansville. Um, I think Nicole Malloy, who's the Assistant Finance Manager, for helping me with that. Uh, she's, uh, had twenty years in banking, so she was a huge help in getting the, the information. Some banks really didn't, um, want to respond, and others didn't give us a whole lot of information. Nobody could rival, uh, interest wise, what, uh, First Federal Savings Bank was offering. And again, it's very competitive, and we locked in a rate through the end of the year with them. Um, so you see they removed five million dollars out of Trust Indiana just for the operating fund, uh, into First Federal Savings Bank. And that rate is, as you see at the bottom, four point two five percent. And even though Trust Indiana's averaging the yield for September was four point two six zero four, by the end of the month, the day, actual daily yield was four point one or less, and continuing to drop after the Fed, uh, decreased interest rates. So, um, we are maintaining that, uh, we have a minimum that we have to keep in there so that, uh, we get that four point two five percent, and then we'll reassess at the end of the year as they propose what their next interest rate and, um, term will be. So for Trust Indiana, again, the average daily yield per year today is four point three oh five one, and then First Federal Savings Bank will be four point two five locked in through the end of the year.
We're now ready for the new world bills. Hold him.
So in the form of a motion, we approved the payment of invoices for the month of September and early part of October, totaling one million, one hundred ninety one thousand, eight hundred ninety two dollars and fifty cents. Included in that is a September fifth payroll, three hundred and seventy six thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents, and a September nineteenth payroll of five hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and fifty five dollars and eighty eight cents. Fair motion?
Second.
A motion and a second, any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favors?
Aye aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? Motion carried. We're now ready for a budget update in the third quarter. Lori?
So this particular report gives you a little bit more breakdown and also includes the revenue that we've, um, recorded as of the end of September twenty twenty five. As you can see, uh, we're still anticipating additional tax revenue in December. And then as we continue through the year, we'll, um, collect our daily operating receipts through all locations. The interest from investment to date is, um, two hundred and seven percent more than what we can budgeted for. Um, so we're doing very well still, um, especially from the earlier part of this year i- in that particular revenue category. Under expenses, the items that are highlighted in red, if you have a color copy, I'm not sure that those are colored, but if. The ones that are in red are those that we've already gone over the line item budget, uh, in particular for that area. And then those that are in turquoise, those are the ones that may be low in funds, but we're still paying out of for the year. Both of those we'll continue to keep an eye on, and then in December, uh, for those that are already over budget for, for that particular category or line, uh, will be transferred, posted transfers to you to cover those so that each one is faithful at, at a minimum. And we're within seven percent if we were to have expended this equally at seventy five percent, uh, through the year. So we're, um, sitting at, instead of twenty five percent balance, we had thirty two percent. Any questions about the expenditures or anything that's over? Or coming close to?
Same like it? Thank you. We're ready for other business. Holiday, um, closure revision, action. Can I do that again?
You can. So, um, last year we had brought the, um, schedule with a tentative for our holiday breakfast or dinner. Um, the administration has, um, decided that we would like to do the dinner for twenty twenty five. Um, the date selected is Monday, the twenty second. Um, we are going to do this again at Central. Um, so therefore, EVPL is requesting to close the library at five P M., um, which is only an additional hour closure, because that's the week that we are, uh, closing at six o'clock, um, for that whole week. So EVPL is seeking the board's approval for the revision of the holiday and library closure schedule for twenty twenty five.
Any motions?
I'm ready. Sorry, go.
A motion in the second to accept it, any questions? A motion and a second to accept it. Any questions or comments?
By closing at five, what time is the dinner supposed to?
We're gonna do it at six.
Okay. You don't have that time to do setup?
Yes.
Okay. I would, that is my concern. I know that atrium, that center area, it's pretty packed.
Uh huh. We, and last time we did it in the browning room, which depends, we're hoping to do that, depends on how many people we have attending, but we're hoping to be able to do it as we did last time. And then that way we at least get that, the browning room set up and then we just talk to her about, because we did the food in the hallway. Yeah, so.
No further comments or questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Same sign of vote. Motion carries. Ready for seven B, holiday and closing period, action item.
So also there was a list for the closures for twenty twenty-six. In addition to the usual closing dates, library administration is requesting to close the library on Saturday, December the twenty-sixth and Sunday, December the seventh, following the holiday breakfast. Or, I'm sorry, the holiday of, I'm still on breakfast, the holiday, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Also, we are only going to be doing one staff day in twenty twenty-six. So that is kind of a difference than what we've been doing in the past when we were doing the two days. So EVPL is seeking the board's approval for a holiday and library closure for twenty twenty-six.
A motion? A may?
Aye.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Sounds like there are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Same sign of vote. That motion carries also. Thank you. Ready for item seven C, change order number one for Oakland.
Okay, so with our beautiful renovation having started at Oakland, we now start to see change orders coming in for different items that we're finding that were unknowns or they pop up their ugly head while we are trying to complete the project. So change order number one at Oakland is for exterior conduit replacement. We had conduit that goes from the very top at Oak Hill Road and goes down the big long hill and then goes into our mechanical room. And at some point in time in the past, we have developed a water issue in that conduit. It's PVC conduit, so things happen underground and we've been getting water into the mechanical room, coming into the bottom of a electrical tray that we have in there. To prevent further damage, we went ahead and they tried to fix it. They tried to figure out if they could find where the water problem was. They could not find it. So they did a proposal in the amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and three dollars to rerun a conduit, a PVC conduit from the electrical room all the way up to the top of the hill to hopefully cease and desist the water issue that we've been having. So that's change order number one.
So here are motion.
So I'm no. Second.
Motion to accept change order number one. Any comments or questions? I will add that the building grounds committee was made aware of this change order and the concern there with the conduit. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Same sign of vote. Motion carried. Lamont, you're still up for Oakland change order number two.
Change order number two. They, these came really close together. They just didn't hit on the same change order. We were hoping to get change order one in last month and didn't get it in time. So change order number two is for the removal and replacement of pavement and a curb along the new construction area where we're building out the new staff break room and the meeting room addition. There was a curb and some asphalt that was in the way. We had to widen it a little bit so that they can do the proper stone structure and everything on the side. So the total amount of that change is two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Is there a motion?
I'm accepting that for change order.
A motion and a second. Any comments or question? Did you have one there? Over the top.
I'd be ready too.
All right. Speaking now for everyone in future. Hearing no further. All those in favor? Same signs of vote. That motion carries as well. Lamont, you are still up. You have change order number seven for Central.
Lucky me. So as we are nearing the end of the Central project, which at the end of this meeting, if anybody wants to ask questions, I'm happy to answer them. As we're nearing the end of the Central project, we have come across a few more items, two billable and one credit item. The metal structure and added acoustics of three thousand, five hundred and one dollars in the east rotunda. So when you come up the stairs, the rotunda that you're looking at, the design originally called for removing the, what we call the tree structure in the middle, the big metal piece. We removed it on the west side. It would be called to remove that in there as we were talking about, as Heather was discussing the furniture options. It just called for putting furniture in the middle, but it really made the room look weird in our head because there is no, there's nothing in the middle. It would all just be flat. We just have this big huge room. So we decided to keep the metal structure in the middle of the room. But then to help with the echo of the room, putting sound panels, kind of similar to what's behind you on that wall, putting sound panels on the top of that metal structure to help den the sound because there will be actual couches or seating area right below that structure. So we're just trying to help out everything we can. We already have sound panels going around the room. This is gonna help, hopefully help den the sound in that room. So that was for an addition of three thousand, five hundred and one dollars. They credited us for not removing the huge structure, which my team removed on the other side, and I think it should be worth a million dollars because what it took for us to cut the other one out was incredible. But they, the, the sound panels are not cheap. None of them are. We, we've tried this and, and just nothing comes back cheap anymore. So that's three thousand, five hundred and one. We did get a credit for cafe countertop scope removal deduct of two thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars in our cafe space, which is on the first floor at the end of the grounding hallway. When you came in, there was the countertops and cabinetry all on the left-hand side that housed a sink. There was a dishwasher over there and all that. We did, there was already called for in the project to remove the last section of countertop because we created a door to go into the teen zone. And all of this is already done. All, all of that construction part is done. When we started doing that, we realized that those countertops and, and cabinetry that would, that housed the sink and everything, they were rotten. They, they were not in good shape. We were scheduled to get new countertops, new solid surface countertops, but the actual cabinets weren't in great shape from the dishwasher. The other side had an ice maker on it and there was some signs of wear. That's the best way I know how to put it. It was not in good, it was all pressed board and, and so any water that got underneath there just didn't look good. So we discussed it as an admin team and decided to pull those out, just to not put anything there. Because it's now the teen zone cafe space, they don't really have a need for a sink in there. They don't have a need for anything. We, we just created a little more open space. So we did get a deduct for two thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars on that. And then the additional V A V piping for twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. That was the T and M cost for having to move hot water piping and sprinkler lines and actually moving V A Vs over because at Central, like out there, the lights are going into a light pocket. They don't hang down below the ceiling tile anymore. And when we pulled those lights down, they just happened to have put the V A Vs right above those pockets. And some of them were too low that we couldn't fit the light in there. We need four and a half inches and some of them were at three. So we had to shift the V A V over. It's silly. A couple of them, we only had them shift over like five inches. But it was in the way, so we had to do it. So that's for a total cost of twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So the total amount of this change order is fourteen thousand and forty-two dollars.
Yeah, motion?
Second.
Two, second. Any comment or question? Only, I should have asked this back at the air handler unit. So the air handler unit was part of the original package that we didn't accept. How are we paying for the air handler unit?
Rainy day fund.
Rainy day fund. Is that noted in here? Or I haven't really answered. Okay. Okay. And so that air handler unit is not going on the overall.
It is on.
Even though it was originally part of the project.
It wasn't. It was an ad if we wanted to take it at the time.
We didn't take it at the time.
We didn't take it at the time. Couldn't even thought it was gonna last longer than it did. But it did. Hot summer got it.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Same sign of vote. Lamont pulls off the drive back in.
All three. Thank you.
Item seven F is nominations committee. Fifty days before the reorganization or the, what's that meeting in January called?
The January fourth meeting?
Electives?
National meeting.
They're looking for, fifty days before that, we have to do, put together nominations committee for officers. Twenty-five days before that, we have to have that, those folks selected. So at this point, if you are interested in being an officer here you know, the board members who are present, and we'll contact those board members who could not make it tonight and see who is interested. If you don't contact me, I may nominate you anyway. To be part of the nominating. So just let me know if you can be part of the nominating. And I think that's it for nominations. Unless Scott, you have anything else? Okay. And then we're on to staff spotlight with our gracious host, Claire Winterheimer.
Hi. I wrote everything out that I wanted to say because I was really excited to share with you yesterday. But I'm Claire Winterheimer. I've been with EVPL since twenty seventeen and I've had the privilege of being the manager at McCullough since twenty twenty-one. McCullough, as you've probably seen, has undergone an incredible transformation in the last few years. And it really has brought an incredible new energy to our location with modernized meeting areas, as you see, and enhanced spaces for collaboration and study. And those spaces have quickly become some of the busiest in the system. Many of our visitors come for technology and computer support to attend a library event or to use our expanded meeting and study spaces. Just last month alone, we had two hundred and sixty-nine small group room reservations. So that's just our four small group rooms. It doesn't include this large meeting space, our online meeting room or our sensor room. So we're seeing incredible use in those spaces. These spaces are being used for everything from business meetings, training sessions, craft circles, to child therapy sessions. We've seen many of these individuals and groups become regular users who really rely on McCullough and EVPL, and that's wonderful to see. Our programming is also thriving and diverse and it reaches patrons across all ages and interests. A recent highlight is our Mahjong mingle program, which began in August and has already become a true McCullough community favorite. We see great, great attendance at it. And it even caught the attention of Evansville Living recently, who came out to do an article. So I believe that's gonna be in the November, December issue, which is exciting to see. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that what makes McCullough really special is our staff here. Their dedication, creativity and heart for service. They're really what keeps McCullough vibrant and welcoming to, to everybody who walks through our doors, which is wonderful. So I'm incredibly proud to be part of this organization and to be part of the McCullough team. And I'm excited to see how McCullough continues to grow. I just want to thank you guys for the opportunity to share. Do you have any questions? About McCullough?
Any comments?
I have a comment that I don't think that Claire knows, that in your correspondence folder, I believe. Did we send them? Did I send them? Are a bunch, I don't know, actually, no, they're sent.
Oh, in the correspondence.
Yeah, in the correspondence folder, we've gotten so many.
Maybe they didn't come through that.
About the Mahjong mingle.
Yes.
I think the most, every single person who comes to that event
Yeah.
has purposely wanted to thank the board and you guys for, for the program. So.
It was wonderful.
Any folks that attend Mahjong?
So first, like I think our first session, we had like over thirty-five people and it stayed really steady. It's a very popular thing and it's, I've heard that it's even popular with like younger ages now. So I guess I need to get in, in that game. I don't know, but.
They gotta set a costume.
Well, that is up. But it's incredible. And I've heard a lot of feedback. I mean, it's really, it's not just a game. It's become, our, what we have here has become like friendships have been built, which is really amazing to see. So, yeah. Thank you for sharing.
They have all sent them in.
And that's what they said. So it happens every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday morning.
Every Tuesday.
Libraries, schools impacting people's lives. This library before the renovation, way before, my oldest daughter turned thirty just recently. And we came when she was a little bitty girl to an author visit in this room over here that greatly impacted her life and set her on a course of being a lifetime reader and so, yeah, every, you never know when that little spark's gonna happen and libraries. And I always mention schools too because, you know, my third grade teacher made a huge difference in my life and I still think back of things she taught me. So you never know when that spark's gonna happen.
Yeah.
So making these programs available. Marcus was saying one of the programs that started was Dungeons and Dragons.
Yeah.
So making those things available and appealing to everyone and making a space that everyone can come and enjoy. So it all comes together. Any other comments or any other business, continued business?
I was just gonna make a couple of announcements. Wanted to thank HR staff. They set up a great training for our management team and all of our managers and assistant managers. They went through leadership training. And it was fantastic. Yeah, I, I, one of the best leadership trainings I've ever been through. I've been lost through a lot in my career. It was really, really good and they did a great job. So I ended up, also our trainer that sometimes is left out, Lauren, does an amazing job finding trains and workshops book online or in person, getting all that information out to our staff so they can get those LEU credits, keep their accreditation through the state and just for professional development. So we keep working with the public. They do an outstanding job. And sometimes we don't do a very good job of really pouting HR because our HR usually don't talk about HR. But in this case, we have to talk about HR because the training, the onboarding, their primary practices, they do an excellent, excellent job. I also wanted to announce one of our employees, Chase Fraser. Won the Indiana Library Federation scholarship this year, so he can further his studies for his master's degree in library space.
That's awesome.
I will also add, which I know you all know because we sent an email, but I'm gonna state it in our public board meeting, that the Evansville Human Rights Commission is honoring EVPL as a whole at the Human Relations Commission Dinner and Awards on Friday, October seventeenth. We were extremely surprised and we are extremely honored to be receiving the Sedell Burger Award, which does recognize our commitment and anyone's commitment who wins it to human rights inclusion and advocacy for all the people in the community. So we are extremely honored to be doing that. And I believe there are ten of us that are going in attendance then. So.
Awesome. Any other business to come before the board? Hearing none. All entertain a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Sir.
Meeting has adjourned.
I got one that happened here a lot.